Good evening, everybody. Board of zoning board meeting Monday, July 10th, 2023. Eileen, could we have an opening statement?
Yes. Zoning Board of Adjustment, Monday, July 10th, 2023. Regular meeting. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Zoning Board to be open adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on March 31st, 2023, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Asbury Park Press and the Star Ledger. Second, on March 31st, 2023, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the clerk of the township of Howell. Third, on March 31st, 2023, said notice was posted in the office of the zoning board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. In accordance with the fire prevention code and for your safety, please be advised that this facility is designed with two emergency exits which are on your right at the front and rear of the meeting room. Furthermore, smoking is not permitted in the municipal building. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcasts on Howell Township TV 77. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues of what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision and the decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. Thank you.
Okay. Could we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Barillo.
Here.
Mr. Cantor.
Here.
Mr. Hughes.
Here.
Mr. Mertens.
Here.
Mr. Roscoe.
Here.
Mr. Stanton is excused. Mr. Ryan.
Here.
Mr. Rubell.
Here.
And Chairman Sayah is excused. You have a quorum.
Thank you, Eileen. Could we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Mr. Baer, could you swear in our professionals?
Do you swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth?
Do you swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
Just please state your name, starting from Mr. Cunliffe down.
Charles Cunliffe, TM Associates.
Jennifer Beam, Leanna Savakian.
Shari Spiro, CME Associates.
Jordan Rizzo, CME Associates.
Your professionals are sworn, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Andy. First order of business is approval of minutes, June 12th, 2023, regular meeting. Eligible voters: Barillo, Cantor, Hughes, Mertens, Rubell, and Mr. Sayah, who's not here. Could I have a motion? Motion to approve.
Second.
Second by Mr. Rubell. Could I have a roll call?
Mr. Barillo.
Yes.
Mr. Cantor.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Mertens.
Yes.
And Mr. Rubell.
Yes.
Minutes approved.
Okay. Do we have any vouchers?
No vouchers tonight.
Okay, great. Correspondence?
No correspondence tonight.
Okay, great. Okay, we do have one resolution, case number BA 23-03, David Reed. Resolution granting bulk variances. Eligible voters: Barillo, Cantor, Hughes, Mertens, Rubell, and Sayah. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Second. We have a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Barillo.
Yes.
Mr. Cantor.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Mertens.
Yes.
And Mr. Rubell.
Yes.
Resolution approved.
Okay. Because there's some conflicts with the engineer and with the attorneys, we've spoken to everybody involved. We are going to make a change to the order tonight. The first case will be Zarelli. I'll read that. This will be case BA 08-24A, Rod Zarelli. Type is use variance in preliminary and final major site plan. Application of Rod Zarelli as applicant and owner seeking use variance in preliminary and final major site plan approval on premises known as Block 49, Lot 11, 255 Squonkum Road to modify the existing warehouse building, including addition of four new overhead doors to provide a total of seven. The two smaller existing buildings, 851 square feet and 2,377 square feet size, are proposed to be removed and a new fence outdoor storage area is proposed. The existing residential dwelling is proposed to remain. Driveway access to the site is also proposed to remain the same. The existing chain link fence along the property frontage is proposed to be relocated closer to the street. And the existing site ID is proposed to be relocated further back from the street. No other changes are proposed with this application. This application was previously heard on November 28th, 2022. This application was scheduled for February 13th, 2023, when it was carried to March 13th, 2023. On March 13th, 2023, this application was partially heard and carried till July 10th, which is tonight. And I know there's a couple of changes. The House is not going to be there. It's... Is that the change? One of the changes?
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Chair, Members of the Board. Salvatore Alfieri, Cleary Giacobi, Alfieri and Jacobs on behalf of the applicant. As you indicated, there are, I guess, there were a bunch of changes that were made during the evolution of this project, but the two more recent ones were the elimination of the single-family home, which was a variance condition because a single-family house is not permitted in the zone. And we also eliminated one of the driveways. Ryan McDermott, our engineer, who will come up momentarily, will go into a lot more detail to summarize the changes. We've had several technical review committee meetings with the board professionals. We think now we have a plan. The reports, as you see, are very clean. We've worked through, we believe, every issue that the board professionals had, and we're prepared to present again the summary. We have three witnesses, all of whom will be brief. Ryan McDermott will just discuss the engineering changes. We have Andy Jafala from Traffic from Dynamic, who did not testify previously, and then our planner Christine Confond. And I'd like to call... And we did re-notice since this is now a live meeting as opposed to the prior virtual meetings.
Okay. Is any of the other witnesses available? If we do have public comments, did they ask any questions?
All of our professional disciplines will be here. Yeah, we had a traffic engineer from the same firm who's not here tonight, but his replacement's here. So yes, they're all here.
Okay. Let's proceed.
Okay, thank you. Ryan? Does he want to stand, sit? What do you want to do?
He needs to be sworn in, right?
Is that speaker working? Or you want to sit? Okay.
It's easier to help him speak. Because I know it's working.
And Ryan has been sworn in and qualified. Andy, do you want to...
He's been...
He hasn't been sworn in live, so...
I think, Mr. Alfieri, we should just do it since it's been so long.
That's fine.
Yeah.
You swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God.
I do.
And just state your name for the record.
Ryan McDermott. M-C-D-E-R-M-O-T-T.
And Ryan, we previously had you qualified as a professional engineer. You still maintaining your license as a professional engineer of State of New Jersey?
I do.
Okay, thank you. Can you summarize for the board the changes that have been made to the plans since the last public hearing and in response to the board's comments and in response to the technical comments raised within the technical review committee meeting?
Absolutely. And if I could, I'd like to take a very brief step back. Some of this information was disseminated within the public noticing. But what you have in front of you here is essentially Sheet 2, the aerial map on the full civil set. This is entitled Aerial Map Exhibit with today's date, prepared by my firm. It's essentially the same version exactly that you're seeing here, with just some additional color added to it for clarity purposes. This is existing conditions. And again, just as a quick refresher, the address is located at 255 Squonkum Road on the west side there. That's the southbound side with about 460 feet of frontage. Property is about 14 acres in size and largely undeveloped due to the wetlands located in the wooded area. That's that western portion of the site on the left side for general orientation purposes. The north arrow points towards the top of the page. Under existing conditions, the site contains a 1,700-square-foot two-story dwelling. That's on the front portion of the site here along the roadway. It contains a 2,400-square-foot building, an 850-square-foot building, which has since been demolished since the application was filed, and a 6,400-square-foot warehouse building. Under existing conditions, there are two full movement driveways, and the onsite circulation and parking areas consist mostly of gravel space. Now, as was previously mentioned, we did agree as one of our changes from the time of the initial application to remove that existing dwelling. We're also at the March 13th Planning Board or Zoning Board hearing. We proposed a 2,800-square-foot addition to that existing warehouse building. That is the one building that is going to remain of the four. We're also proposing 1,400 square feet of loft space above that building, and that loft space is going to be used primarily for storage purposes, bringing the total gross floor area of said building to 10,650 square feet plus or minus. Again, we previously added a masonry trash enclosure at the board's request and in lieu of foundation plantings and because the applicant needs access to that building via several roll-up overhead doors, we've added 34 evergreen trees along the southerly property line to help bolster that buffer. We've also added the 50-foot residential buffer to the north on our plans, the delineation for same just to show that no outdoor storage space is proposed within that buffer. Now, we've been through a few iterations in an attempt to best capture comments from the board and its professionals over the last two hearings and over a couple of TRCs since the initial application. And I'd like to summarize those changes we've made since the March 13th hearing. And under existing conditions, again, there are two driveways there now, one towards the central portion of the site, one adjacent to the southerly property line. We previously planned to keep that southerly driveway and eliminate the central driveway. The central driveway is very thin under existing conditions, and it really only served that residential dwelling. So we were planning to eliminate that and keep the southerly driveway. However, the applicant is now proposing to remove the southerly driveway. In doing so, eliminates an existing nonconformity via separation from the property line. And instead, a new driveway will be proposed in approximately the same location of that existing centralized driveway being highlighted there. And it's going to be expanded to allow for sufficient vehicular turning movements. What I'm going to do now is flip to a colorized version of the site plan. This is Sheet 4 of the civil drawings. What you're looking at here is called the Site Plan Rendering with today's date prepared by my firm. And this is just essentially a colorized version of this sheet you see in front of you on the screen, just for color clarity purposes, so you can see what's going on here. For site identification purposes, along with the driveway shift, we're also planning to relocate the existing monument sign onsite and the existing flagpole to be next to that driveway. They're currently adjacent to the southerly driveway. Because we're removing that, they would kind of be sticking out in the middle of no man's land, so we're planning to move those closer to the centralized new driveway here. The other most notable change is that we're no longer proposing to expand outdoor storage into the front yard setback. Whereas previously, the applicant was seeking to move the existing fence in the front yard in the easterly direction such that it would be located approximately 30 feet from the right-of-way line, that existing fence will now remain at the front yard setback, and we're not proposing that expansion anymore. Additionally, that grass area which exists up front will not be used for storage space either, and the limit of outdoor storage space has been delineated and moved accordingly. In doing so, the total outdoor storage space now proposed has been reduced to approximately 81,000 square feet, down from the March 13th proposal of approximately 110,000 square feet. So almost a 30,000-square-foot reduction there. Other minor changes we've include, we've made include rotating the trash enclosure and shifting it to the west very slightly, which is a suggestion that came up during the recent TRC. We've added landscaping around the trash enclosure and will place additional plantings at the south side in accordance with the July 3rd LTE review letter. We've also added a refuse truck circulation plan to the civil drawings to show how a vehicle gets in and out of that masonry trash enclosure. And because we are not relocating the fence in that front yard, the planting relocations and the wall relocation we previously discussed are no longer necessary. The only relocations for plantings at this time are to bring some of those plantings out of the proposed site triangle of our driveway. Now, I believe that captures most of the changes and as...
I have a few follow-up questions. So first, as it relates to the aerial that was shown, where the area that was disturbed versus the wooded area, that's not changing, correct?
Correct.
So the wetland line is not being impacted in any way?
Correct.
And has an application been made to the DEP?
Yes.
And what is the status of that?
We have our LOI, which determines the delineation of the wetlands and the wetlands buffer on this plan are accurate. And what the applicant is currently seeking is minor disturbance within that wetlands buffer via a transition area waiver and buffer averaging plan to allow that small amount of disturbance in the buffer there for the building addition.
In the area where the home previously was located and also where the southern driveway was previously located, what type of landscaping are we proposing? If the board would recall at the last hearing or at the prior hearing, we showed the front view of the landscaping, and it's very dense, and you really don't see any activity. And I just want, Ryan, can you confirm that that denseness of the landscaping will be consistent?
It will be. And that was something that came up during our last hearing was discussion of how that is going to be relocated if we are pushing it closer to the street. Can those streets maintain liveliness? Are they going to die? If so, how long is it going to take? There was a lot of discussion of that and the fencing. We're leaving it as is. We're not touching those. Furthermore, we're adding additional plantings in the front yard to help support that buffer.
And you indicated that you reviewed Shari's letter, the most recent one of July 3rd, and she had a couple of minor technical comments. Again, you'll address those to her satisfaction?
Yes.
As it relates to the one driveway, we did receive a letter from the fire official that that driveway was adequate. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And also, Jordan issued a report dated July 3rd with also a few minor comments. Again, we will address all of his technical comments?
Correct.
And Monmouth County Planning Board has jurisdiction over the road?
Yes.
And of course, an approval would be conditioned upon getting a final approval from them?
Correct.
Otherwise, I believe that's all we have, Mr. Chair, just again summarizing what we did since the multiple hearings before.
Okay, well, thank you. I like what I see so far, but let's hear from our professionals. Jen? Jordan?
I have no issues. Thank you.
Did I hear you right?
I have no issues. Yes, you heard me right. You should make sure that you tell Chairman Sayah that like when he's not here, I have no issues.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I still have a couple of minor things. They did work to eliminate some of the relief needed through these changes. However, there is one additional variance that has to do with relocating the sign and the flagpole just to be centered on the driveway. Because it's in the buffer, that's relief. And there is an existing flagpole and sign there today, so they're just relocating that. And we didn't have many technical comments left. They said that they would comply. As far as county, I'm guessing you've already received some feedback. Is there anything major? Are you just working through minor comments with the county?
It was similar comments that were raised by this board and yourself, Mr. Board Engineer, about the site triangles, about centralizing the driveway. They also had a county standard of separation from an adjacent driveway on an adjacent property. So in moving that driveway, it also helped alleviate some of that. But the application is in. We've received review comments, and the final approval was pending.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Any board members have any questions to this point? Yes?
Do I have a question about the storage area? Like, what is proposed to be stored?
Well, he... Mr. Zarelli testified early on that there is already a storage area on site that's been approved by the zoning board many years ago and is simply expanding it. One of the recommendations from the zoning officer who's not here at one of the prior hearings was that he doesn't want it to turn into a junkyard, and therefore, there should be a limitation of no more than 12 months for any item to be stored on site. And we had agreed that we would live with that condition. But he has boats. He had... I mean, Ryan, do you know?
Yeah, I was just taking a quick skim through the prior 2009 resolution. I believe it was mentioned in here explicitly. I'm just looking for a... Outdoor storage shall consist of the applicant's operational equipment used in his construction business and the storage of recreation vehicles, boats, and similar conveyances not owned by him.
Yeah, he has a... His business is port-a-potties and that type of thing for construction, so he does use the site for that as well.
Okay. And the vehicles that are there, they won't be worked on as far as maintenance and stuff like that?
No. That's correct. Further right into that resolution, no vehicle, boat, or equipment repairs of any kind are to be performed outdoors. Same goes for no winterization.
And is there a term limit on how long a particular vehicle can stay there?
We indicated 12 months, no more than 12 months.
12 months?
Yes. And that was a... It was the zoning officer or Jennifer, one or both made that recommendation at one point early on.
Okay. One other thing, I think on this, the agenda said seven bays, but I think I count eight?
Yeah, I was going to say the same thing.
I believe it's nine, actually.
It's nine bays?
I believe it's nine bays, yes. It was probably previously seven at one point before we contemplated the building addition.
Okay. But on your... Doesn't it look like eight up there? Am I missing something?
Yeah, that's... So there's eight along the southerly facade and one along the westerly facade.
I don't see that at all.
I count nine where you have it, so I'm not 100% sure what you're talking about.
I'm just referring to the architectural drawings.
Well, I'm looking at your site plan that's up on the screen.
Yeah, there's eight shown there.
I count nine.
I think one of those might just be a dimension.
Yeah, that's just a dimension.
And then there's an overhead door. And again, I just want to confirm that those, the length of those loading spaces, that's just for graphical depiction purposes only. That's just to show compliance with the ordinance, that we do meet the number of required loading spaces at that required size. The applicant is not going to have those large tractor-trailers coming in and out of the site.
Where's the ninth supposed to be?
It's on the west side.
Could you like point to it?
In the wetlands?
It's in the buffer there, Jen.
Can you go up to the exhibit and show us what you're talking about?
Sure. It's actually that line right where the cursor is highlighted, right here. Correct.
And that's an existing door.
Correct. That is an existing door, Jen.
Is there an affirm there from the buffer to get a truck in and out of there without encroaching upon it?
There is.
So 60 feet?
The 60 feet is actually not needed to get trucks in and out. The 60 feet is just to show graphically we can fit the number of required loading spaces. He actually does not need that full 60 feet to get his trucks in and out. And that was one of the reasons that he's proposing that building addition is for the added width inside the building.
We okay with that?
I mean, is there a reason that we're not showing like the loading in the similar fashion on these plans?
We can... We'd be happy to provide a vehicle circulation exhibit to show he can get in and out of there, but that's, again, that's just an existing door to show that there's not...
Understood. But at the same time, you know, I think the board is concerned that it's going to be difficult to move around, so I mean, I'm taking you at your word, which is totally fine, but I think that we would like to see if the board is to act in the affirmative, that circulation plan.
We'd be happy to do that.
Okay. I think that'd be a great idea because I think that's what we all agree on. Anybody else on the board?
We talked about the outside storage in the loft area. What's the proposal for storage items up in that area?
I don't even know if it's fully contemplated out yet, but it's miscellaneous office storage space.
Right. It depends on who the tenant is, but it's just going to be usually office equipment, material, and/or minor storage for small... There's small spaces that would be rented out, and they all have to meet the use limitations of the SED zone. Is it SED or SED 1?
SED 1.
SED 1 now.
So the loft area will be segmented accordingly with...
If it has to be separated to accommodate the tenant, yes. If not, then it wouldn't be.
It will be.
Oh, you have it segmented already?
Yeah, I apologize. It is on the architectural drawings that were filed, and...
I'll pass this up on, so you have it. They pulled it up, Ryan.
Okay. Oh, perfect. It's just the hatched areas that you see on your screen there. Thank you.
No further questions from me.
Okay. Anybody else?
Yeah, do we know who the tenants are?
Not yet, no. I mean, again, the problem always is by the time we get... And this has been going a while. Get approval, get permits, build it. You don't really even market for tenants, except that the applicant is one that is onsite presently, and he has another tenant who's onsite who will be relocated in one of the buildings.
Is that the environmental group?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a fire department training company, I think.
Okay.
Fire training. And of course, the applicant's business is already onsite. So that's two of the users. The other ones will be vacant space.
But whoever's coming in is going to be subjected to the, you know, the rules and regulations for this site?
They have to be permitted use in the zone, and they have to get a zoning sign-off from the zoning department and obviously a CO.
Did you say there was an active fire training facility, like firemen go there to train?
No, no, no. It's just a company that does... I don't know the exact description of the business. Mr. Zarelli, who previously testified, could answer better than we do. Can Andy swear anything with Rod? Raise your hand.
Do you swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God? Please state your name for the record.
Rod Zarelli, Z-A-R-E-L-L-I.
Witness is sworn.
So Rod, in addition to... Well, first of all, your business is... Can you describe briefly what your business is that you conduct onsite presently?
I have a dumpster and port-a-john company.
And you have another tenant onsite presently that I was trying to describe, but you can do better.
There is environment... Certified environmentals in the one building I'll be tearing down, so they want to move into the new building when we do the renovations. And I'm partners in a fire department training company. We're onsite also. It's... We go to firehouses, we get training at night and stuff like that, and we do, you know, a little this, a little that.
But that training doesn't occur onsite?
A little bit, not much. Not like... We don't... We do have... We do training on ropes, so we do have guys inside that be, you know, climbing ropes and things like that.
And the environmental company, what do they do onsite?
They do radon testing and oil tank removals.
But none of that activity doesn't occur onsite?
No, they go out, they store their equipment for the... They do the radon. They do the radon, the pucks come there. But the environmental... They, you know, tanks are removed somewhere else, and they bring them... They just keep their equipment onsite.
Okay, so like you, they'll be doing their equipment... Anything maintenance will be outside your site?
No maintenance.
As far as...
Oh, no, I do my maintenance and everything onsite.
But the other tenants?
Uh, yeah, they don't have shop space.
Okay. Anybody else? I guess I do have another question. As far as the storage outside with different vehicles, boats, whatever it may be, are there, for lack of better words, parking spaces for them? Are they delineated or denoted, or are parking... So things are orderly?
It's semi-ordinarily now. That's why I want to tear down the building and make it very orderly. It's gonna be one side of the property will be for me and that building. The rest of it's gonna be for the outdoor storage. It's gonna kind of be separated by the fence. My... The warehousing, not warehousing, but the shop space on the one side will be behind... On that side of the fence, the north side of the fence, and all the outdoor parking will be on the south side of the fence.
Okay, and there'll be enough room for fire department vehicles? If multiple vehicles or boats are on fire, they'll have their room to...
Oh, yeah, they... I have a lot of RVs. They're all 30, 40 foot, so they all need enough room to get in and out, to back into their spots, so they have a nice aisle.
Okay. So you got... Okay, I think we can go back to your next witness.
And we're gonna call our planner up. We have our traffic engineer here, and he testified previously, and we've reduced significantly the intensity of the use, so if you have questions, I'll answer them, but otherwise, we're gonna go to our planner.
Okay. Christine, go.
Do you swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you guys?
Yes.
Please state your name for the record.
Good evening, Chairman and members of the board. For the record, my name is Christine Nazzaro, N-A-Z-Z-A-R-O, Cofon, C-O-F-O-N-E. I've been testifying for almost 30 years in the state of New Jersey as a professional planner. I've been qualified here in Howell on numerous occasions and before well over 450 other planning and zoning boards. I teach planning and zoning courses for the Rutgers Center for Government Services, and my licenses are current and valid.
We accept your credentials.
Thank you, Chairman.
Christine, you were... You or your office was... Were present for all of the virtual meetings that we had before, and I know you also participated in some of the TRCs we had. So you're familiar with the site, and you're familiar with the testimony that occurred through tonight. Is that correct?
Yes, I am familiar with the site. I testified on the site next door to us about a decade or so ago, so I'm familiar with the area. Justin from our office was on the prior hearings, but I'm very familiar, and I have participated in the TRCs. I'm also familiar with the recent zoning amendment that Howell did for the subject property, rezoning it from SED to SED-1, which is significant, because what that did was that rendered warehousing a conditionally permitted use in the zone. The reason the zoning board is still retaining jurisdiction is because one of those conditions is there's a maximum-size site of the property to be 10 acres. The subject property at just over 14 acres violates that, so that puts us before the zoning board of adjustment for a D3 variance for an unmet conditional use standard. Previously, we were seeking the ability to retain multiple uses on the property, but as Chair indicated, and it was stated by Mr. Alferi as well as Ryan, our site engineer, we have eliminated that, so we're not asking to have that.
And that means the residential use was...
Correct, the residential use was eliminated. So that eliminates having the multiple uses on one lot. So when you're dealing with an absent compliance with a conditional use standard, the burden of proof that the board is governed by in accordance with the Coventry wear case is that absent compliance with that standard, is this still an appropriate location for the use that the governing body legislatively decided was appropriate here by zoning it for such? So as you also heard, one, our site engineer, was going over the site. The site's a 14 acres, but such a significant portion of it is constrained. You could see that from both the aerial as well as the site plan that was presented. So as far as resulting in a development that is consistent with the intensity envisioned by Howell when you put it in place and put that 10-acre governor, I don't think that that's going to rise to the level of a substantial detriment here, since so much of our site is not usable due to the presence of environmental constraints. So I think the board can certainly conclude that absent compliance with that conditional use standard, it's still an appropriate location. We're also seeking a bulk variance for the accessory structure, for the sign and the flagpole to be located in the front yard. That, to me, is certainly a C2 variance. There's no real hardship for us to comply with that, but certainly it will result in a better zoning alternative. That certainly will result in the free flow of traffic. That sign, as well as that flagpole, can be located outside any site triangle areas. So I think, again, that's one where there'll be no substantial detriment to the zone plan or the public good. And certainly, you can look at numerous purposes of the land use law being advanced by this application, including criteria I, which talks about promoting a desirable visual environment. You heard Mr. Zarelli himself say that the site, you know, will certainly be more organized than it is today, and we are taking the storage, and we are not going to locate that in any front yard setback areas. So that's certainly a benefit. Criteria M talks about an efficient use of the land. That's particularly important when you look at the fact that the master plan was last reexamined in 2019, and one of those goals was to allow for the community to change with a diversified and global economy and to meet those needs. And certainly, the town is doing that by zoning for warehousing at this location. It's efficient to allow these uses to expand in their locations that they exist. That's certainly also consistent with criteria M, again, which talks about an efficient use of the land and avoiding urban sprawl and degradation of the environment. And to recognize the need to adopt a changing dynamics and demands of a global and diverse economy, which this application certainly does. As far as the negative criteria, the negative criteria does not ask you to hold this or any other applicant to a standard that there be no detriment, just that the benefits of the grant of the variance outweigh any detriment. And you've heard also, we are introducing 34 Evergreens, which is a year-round screening onto the site to provide additional buffering. We will have no structures in... We're not proposing any structures in the front yard setback or in the buffer. And we have agreed to a condition that nothing stay onsite, and I think that's important for the 12 months, because that will... I know the township had some concern as to not wanting this to turn into a dumping grounds or a junkyard. So having that governor in there runs with the land then. So if the site is ever sold, that would go into the land with the resolution of approval if the board were so inclined to move that way. So that informs my decision that we meet our statutory burden of proof for the grant of the variance, and the variances can be granted with no substantial detriment to the zone plan or the public good.
Okay, thank you. Jennifer?
Once again, I know this may be shocking, but I take no exception to the testimony. I think once the residential dwelling was eliminated, and I do agree that the site is heavily constrained, so while we do have that 10-acre maximum, they're not using anywhere near that amount of area. I don't take exception to the location of the flagpole or the sign. It's really just a mere relocation. So I have no objection to the testimony nor the relief that the applicant is requesting. Don't get used to it. I'm buying lottery tickets on the way home. You might have to die, this never happens.
Well, I'll ask this question anyway. Anybody have a question for the applicant, planner, Christine? I didn't think so. Thank you.
Thank you. Nice to be here in public.
Good to see you again.
Mr. Chair, that concludes our presentation. Obviously, we're all prepared to answer any questions the board members or the public may have.
Okay, before we go to public... Sherry, you were good with all the changes with the landscaping?
Yeah, there's just a species change that we're gonna do, but yes.
But you're happy the green giants are staying put, right?
Yes, that's much better than moving them.
Okay. So if nobody in the board has any more questions, I guess we'll open up to public.
Make a motion to open? Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
On favor?
Aye.
Eileen?
The board will now open to public.
Well, now that we're in live, I can say, do we have a motion to close to public? Because that was...
Motion to close.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay, Sal, you wanna...
Yeah, just very brief summary. First of all, we thank the board and the board's professionals. This application did evolve into what we all believe is a very, very superior product than what we originally proposed. We reduced the intensity, we have the buffering, we eliminated the single-family home, which was a D-variance condition, and we request that the board grant the approval subject to all the stipulations we've previously made plus those that were made this evening.
Okay, thank you. Okay, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chair, I really appreciate... This has been a long one, all the work that was put into this, absolutely, and our professionals for, you know, working hard to get this done. So with all that said, I just would like to reiterate, we'd like to see something, I guess, in the compliance side about that side door, which I know we all agree to, which is great. With all that said, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Eileen, can we have a roll call?
Mr. Barillo?
Yes.
Mr. Kanter?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
I must say, you guys did a great job tonight, because I think we made some good changes. You kept Jen quiet tonight, which is a big change, but it's a welcome change, because I know you guys did a lot of work to make this work, and I'm gonna vote yes as well.
Mr. Roscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
And Mr. Rubel?
Yes.
Application is approved.
Thank you, everyone.
You're welcome. Take care, Sal. Good seeing you.
I'll be back.
Okay, do you guys want to move on, or do you want to take a break? Okay. No, I'm good. Everybody else good? Okay, the next case on the agenda tonight is case number B-821-23A. Patterson Family Farm, where a use variance and amended P slash major site plan. Description, application of Patterson Family Farm as applicant and owner of premise known as Block 167, Lot 15.02, 636 Adelphia Road, seeking use variance and amended preliminary and major site plan approval as they propose a 28-foot by 16-foot, 448 square feet total expansion to the existing barn. Additionally, the applicant now proposes the barn to be serviced by a private well and septic system. Expiration is August 31st, 2023.
Good evening. Glad to be in person. My name is Dennis Galvin. I'm with the firm of Davis and East Menudos Peones. You might remember from our ZOVA appearance, I represented Patterson Farm probably in a winter time, about 10 or so months ago. To give you a... Put this... To narrow this down to my simple thought on this is, once we took a look at the project, which is basically, we're a farm, we've always been a farm, we want to be a farm, and we want to continue to be a farm by creating, generating a little extra revenue from one of our barns. Came in, you graciously, you granted us approval. Looked back, I looked at what we did, and you said, oh, crap. We need a place to go to the bathroom. In the building, it's gonna make it too crowded. So we need a 458-foot, basically a bathroom that's gonna be attached to the barn. Now, your professionals can't look the other way. They can't say it's okay. We have to come back, and we have to gain your approval.
Yeah.
The other thing that we're gonna ask you for tonight is that we have reasons why it would be really bad for us to have to hook into the city sewer system to be exceptionally expensive. And remember what our game plan is. We want to try to do something that meets all the criteria that we can, but we gotta keep it as inexpensive as possible so we can pull off this trick of having an occasional or weekly event at our barn and still operate a farm overall. So what I'd like to do is I have Mr. Plaskonka. He looks a little beat up, but I'm sure he's ready to go. He's that fighting weight. And instead of Mr. Higgins, I have his daughter, who appears before you regularly, and she will testify as to the planning testimony so that we've touched all the bases. And my goal is to get Jen to say, yeah, she's got no problem with this case too. You don't have to go yet, but...
Is that the goal?
That's always my goal, Jen, please. So, Mr. Plaskonka, could you raise your right hand?
Do you swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you guys?
I do.
Please state your name for the record.
John J. Plaskonka, P-L-O-S-K-O-N-K-A, professional engineer, Manalaba, New Jersey.
And does the board accept his credentials?
Yes, we do.
Thank you.
So far away, Mr. Plaskonka.
I think you've done a good summary, Dennis. If the board recalls Alan and Sharon, who are here tonight, testify before the board initially at the first public hearing, and they operate the farm from basically sunup to sundown, seven days a week. And the board gave us permission to use an existing barn for the hosting of commercial events, up to 200 people. The board approved the overall plan, ingress, egress, parking, et cetera, stormwater management. And what we left with is to... How do we serve the customers with the... What they have is a trailer that comes in. It's a very nice trailer for bathrooms. And if you recall, the events they hold are little birthday parties or a wedding, and there's no preparation on the site for food or any water use except for the bathrooms. So we're trying to not only do the addition, which is 446 square feet. It's 28 by 16 attached to the barn. And then they have the... It would be serviced by private well, which they have onsite, and by a septic system, which is... Could be built, as you can see on the map there. This septic system off to the left of the addition. Addition's to the left of the barn, and the septic's up in that location. We did have the Board of Health out to the site, and we have a report from the Board of Health that they witnessed our testing. We have great soils out here, so nice sandy soils. There was no issue putting in a septic system. And I asked them a while back to just measure the amount of water from their well that goes into the facility, and surprisingly, it's very, very low, almost like 30 gallons maximum per event. You have one event per day. Even with 50 or 100 people, there is very low, very low flow. So if you know, if you have a single-family house on a property, you design it for 400 gallons per day. We have a situation here. We're gonna design it for probably maybe 200 gallons per day, but we'll get the Board of Health approval from the county, and we'll get the Board of Health approval for the well use also. So the only change we have at this point is to add that addition to the barn and put a septic system in and seek approval from the board. I think I saw Charlie's report on this, and basically, we're not increasing the intensity of the site with this small addition of 446 feet on a 72-acre farm, and it will not affect parking or any other issues that we had with the previous approval. And if you look at... If we had to go to the sewer authority, we'd have to take a line out under 537... Not 537, 524 to the other street, and that would be very, very expensive to get a manhole over there and then pay the hookup fees, go to DEP, and it goes on and on and on for this extremely low flow. So we're looking for the board to act favorably on this with the understanding that there will not be any cooking onsite. There will not be any cleanup, no... No... Washers or dryers.
Let me ask you this. Other than these two changes of the additions of the 450-some-odd feet of bathroom and the septic system, all the other points that we had agreed to in the resolution will be followed?
Absolutely, and we'll comply with a couple of comments that Charlie had in his report in terms of drainage. We'll clean that up.
Do you have a drawing of the new bathroom?
They've been provided to the board. It may be in the set that you have. I also have handouts here on the old-school handouts.
Yeah, because I would like just to see the inside. I mean, just...
So, Mr. Chairman, if I could just jump in and kind of move it along a little bit. So, you know, unfortunately, if the applicant had had to force the site to show a box on the plan the first time they came around, we could have approved this administratively. You know, they've already put testimony on the record that there's not gonna be any expansion to the prior approval as far as the number of attendees to the site and things of that nature. Mr. Plaskonka did allude to the sanitary demand. He alluded, you know, single-family dwellings typically have 400 gallons per day. Mr. Plaskonka did circulate some information from the applicant. They did some metering last fall regarding the water usage for the temporary bathrooms they were using during the last fall season. They were on the order of 20 to 30 gallons per event. I think the largest one they had... to thirty gallons per event. I think the largest one they had was, you know, a hundred and twenty people was twenty-three to twenty-five gallons, you know, so you're significantly lower than what would be generated by a single-family dwelling. Our ordinance does say sanitary sewer connection is required when there's public sewer available immediately in your right of way. I'll just point out for the board, there is sanitary sewer, it's available in, I think it's Ambiance Boulevard across the street there. That's technically not the right of way that it butts the frontage. You know, Adelphia Road is actually the right of way. So, and then the distance to the manhole, our ordinance requires for single-family dwellings to connect with, within a hundred feet of available public sewer. It's a hundred and twenty-five feet. So there is some, you know, if the board does not see issue with it, to grant a relief of that, there is some, you know, reasoning for that. Like I said, it's significantly lower than what's for a single-family dwelling. I'll just note, they'll have to get any Monmouth County Board of Health approvals for the septic system. They got the soil logs, but they actually have to go through and get the design and everything like that nature. They'll make determination on separation for the well and everything like that. And the only other two questions I have, Mr. Plaskonka, right, there's no change, there's no site lighting for the parking area, anything of that nature, right?
Change for the parking light, lighting?
No lighting, right?
No.
Correct. And then the fire official, he just basically issued a memo saying that my prior comments from the prior approval are still in effect, the applicant will comply with that as far as
Absolutely. That's what we're saying. Basically, the same case, we had brought up about the bathrooms then, I think.
So, I have no issue with this, Mr. Chairman. Like I said, unfortunately, if there was a gray box that was shown on the original plan, we probably could approve this administratively, but, you know, it's a technicality that required them to come back to the board. I have no issue with it.
No, I totally understand that. Jennifer?
I, I mean, Allison's going to come up and testify to the change in the use variance, but I would submit to the board that this is a de minimis change from what, I mean, the overall use variance, and Allison, I don't mean to steal your thunder, but Steal it. the overall, the overall concept of what we approved with the banquets and things like that has not changed. They've stipulated that all those things are going to remain the same. So my professional opinion is that the, the factors that impact the use variance have not changed at all with this de minimis change. I agree with Charlie. Had they shown this box, this probably would have been handled administratively. I don't disagree with Charlie with respect to the distance to the, to connecting to the sewer and the demands that have been presented. So, you know, I, from Mr. Plaskonka's testimony, I have no comment, and I'm sure I'll have no comment on Ms. Coffin's testimony either.
Mr. Chair, if I could just, for administrative purposes, we mark that A eleven.
Okay.
So get that on the record.
Well, good job, Matt.
Trying to do my job.
And Dennis, this is a new exhibit? This has not been pre, this was not marked?
All right, so we're going to
I'm asking.
Say, I'm conceding it's a new exhibit.
Okay.
Okay.
I know if it's a concession, it could be a fact.
It could be a fact, yes.
Dennis, the only thing that, Mr. Plaskonka circulated an email with the, the water usage and everything, I just asked that that be provided to be part of the record for administrative purposes.
I've no comment on that. You need it?
Uh, he submitted it to me, but I just asked that he submit to Eileen for, you know, the board's administrative record.
No problem. Yes, we'll take over that.
Okay.
So do you
Well, before we move in, I do, I move on, I just want to make sure any board members have any questions before we move to planning.
Quick one. On the, that's not the site plan, but where's, I see where the septic field is. Where's the well?
Well is by the existing house.
Oh, okay.
And we have to go through the County Board of Health to make sure that that well's approved and, and used as part of this, as part of this proposal.
Can you be a little bit more specific on where the well location is? Where?
It's off the page at the bottom, I think. There you go.
Oh, down there, thank you.
Oh, it's all the way down here?
Yeah.
Does that work?
Yeah, I mean, it has to be a hundred feet separation between the septic and the well, so that's probably way more than a hundred feet.
So, the house and the barn and, okay.
It's, I don't think it's under an existing dwelling, it's to the side of it.
Okay, cool.
Nicholas, should you have any?
Sure.
Oh, wow.
Sorry, I'm so sorry.
Okay, go ahead.
No questions, sir?
No.
Get ahead of myself.
No, we're all set.
Allison, do you swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you guys?
Yes, I do.
Please state your name for the record.
Hi, Allison Coffin, C.O.F.F.I.N., Licensed Professional Planner in the state of New Jersey, certified by the American Institute of Certified Planners. I appear here several times a year.
Do we accept that Allison's credentials?
Yes, we do. We've seen you many times, but not in person for a while.
I'm gonna
Two weeks ago she was here.
Yeah.
Oh, well, was I. I was here.
Don't make that.
No, I won't. Just one of those, sorry.
I'm going to keep it brief for this one.
Yeah.
I, I agree with Jen. It's a de minimis expansion to a use you've already approved. It improves it slightly by replacing the exterior bathroom trailer with an attached bathroom structure that's going to be more aesthetically pleasing and function better. And there's no increase to the use that results from this, no change to the impacts of the use. It's about as de minimis an expansion of a pre-existing nonconform use as you can get.
Okay.
I have no issue with that testimony.
Yeah, I didn't think you would.
And, Mr. Chair, I just want to put it on the record. So if the applicant has any intent in the future to hook up to public sewer twenty, thirty, forty years from now, I just want to put it on the record that we don't take any issue with it. And then I don't feel it's, I feel it's something that can be handled either administratively or through the engineering department. They don't need to return to the board to, to, to get like an amended site plan approval for that.
Okay.
That's kind, and we thank Mr. Coffin.
I agree with you, Charlie, on that. Okay, at this time, we're going to open to public. So have a, ask for a motion by the board.
Motion open to public.
Have a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
The board will now open to the public.
Seeing none, do I have a motion to close?
Motion to close.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Final comments, if you have any.
I think they would be unwise.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the board?
Was that open to the public, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Okay, that was quick.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was quick.
Nobody cared, sorry.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the application for use variance and amended PF major site plan as stipulated with all of the various stipulations provided by the board professionals.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Eileen, roll call.
But, Mr. Chairman, is that, is that motion, and Mr. Cantor, is that motion with septic and not hooking to sewer?
It's
Just so we're clear.
Okay, the way that Charlie explained it, however, yeah, with septic, but with the opportunity to hook up to public sewer if in the future they so desire.
Just wanted it clear, because Charlie left it to the board in his original testimony.
Oh, okay, okay.
That's why.
Thanks for bringing that up, Andy. There we have a second. Roll call.
Mr. Barillo.
Yes.
Mr. Cantor.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Mertens.
Yes.
Mr. Roscoe.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan.
Yes.
And Mr. Rubel.
Yes.
Application is approved.
The Pattersons, thank you. Mr. Plaskonka thanks you, and I thank you.
And we thank the Pattersons, too.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Eileen, we're going to go to, take a break now. So
A five-minute break?
Yeah, yeah.
The board will take a five-minute break and reconvene at eight oh five PM.
Okay, next case on the agenda tonight is case number BA twenty-one dash twenty-eight slash Freehold Welding type use variance, bulk variance, and certificate of nonconformity. The applicant of Freehold Welding as applicant for one six seven dash one six nine Asbury Road, also known as block one eighty-three, lot five nine point oh one and six zero, seeking a certificate of nonconformity confirming that in existing residential use and in existing commercial welding business use, multiple principal uses and structures is a pre-existing nonconformity on the subject lots. The applicant is also seeking a use variance approval for Freehold Welding and Danny Detail uses. Expiration is August twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three. Ms. Alfieri, I haven't seen you in a while.
Yes, long time. Let's hope you keep the positive momentum going.
Yeah.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Salvatore Alfieri, on behalf of the applicant. As your summary indicated, there are several components of this application. We have three witnesses, our engineer, we have a representative from Freehold Welding, and we also have our planner, Allison, who you just saw before as well. This application was filed a couple of years ago by a different attorney who I took over. I think he may have retired or he's slowed on, slowed down on his work. And it's been dragging around for a while. We've had a couple of technical meetings with your professionals, and I know they've walked the site. Particularly, Tim has worked with Charlie to try and address the drainage, and he's made substantial progress and has to do a little bit more to, to satisfy Charlie, but we're prepared to do that. We, it was originally filed as, as a certificate of nonconformity only. We amended it to ask for the de variance relief as well, because there's been a change of one of the users, which is now Danny's detailing. And also, we've expanded the Freehold Welding since the inception of that business back fifty-plus years ago. So that's the type of relief we need, and we'll get into that. But I'd like to introduce our engineer, who needs to be sworn in first.
Yes. Do you swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you guys?
Yes, I do.
Please state your name for the record and spell your last.
Tim Fitzpatrick, F.I.T.Z.P.A.T.R.I.C.K.
And Tim, we're seeking to have you qualified as a Licensed Professional Engineer. Would you place your credentials on the record, please?
I'm a Stevens graduate. I've got thirty-five years of experience practicing as a civil engineer throughout New Jersey. I've appeared before numerous planning and zoning boards. Most of the work that we do is industrial, light industrial. I don't know when the last time I've been to hell. I think I was here a long time ago.
Okay, but every, all the licenses are up to date?
Yes, they are.
Okay, we accept your credentials. Thank you.
And Tim, your office prepared the plans that have been submitted in support of this application, is that correct?
Correct.
And you've also worked with the board professionals, particularly T and M, to try and address the stormwater management issues that were raised?
I believe we addressed every issue raised.
Okay.
And a revision that has not been submitted yet.
Okay. So can you describe, first of all, I guess, orient the board as to where this property is located, and I know you have an aerial that we're going to need to mark, Andy. Okay. Identify that for the record, please.
This is an aerial photo map of the property. It seems to be
Can you see that?
You can initial it.
Is it electronic, is that?
I don't think it was submitted electronically.
Put it right.
We're going to have our secretaries initial it.
Just bring it back a little more.
Do we have Eileen first?
What are we up to, Eileen, do you?
We're up to A nine, so that would be A ten, if that's a new exhibit.
First, Tim, tell, tell the board where this property is located, street and surrounding uses.
Located at the end of Asbury Avenue, it's here, the access center, it's like, up against Earl, to the east.
Um, she doesn't, we can't hear you.
Are they, do you have a hand mic working?
Yeah, we can't see it, we can't hear it.
I think it'll, there's no light on my
Yeah, yeah.
Right there.
That's getting better now. Actually, go back.
We step back, under that light.
No, back up more.
Yeah.
Yeah, right there.
Right there.
Okay. Now you can stay close to this microphone so they can hear you. So you indicated as at the end of Asbury Avenue to the bottom of the, of the, of that exhibit is Earl, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, go ahead, continue. And speak to the mic so they can hear you in the microphone.
It's a three and a half acre site, just under three and a half. The primary use is Freehold Welding, which is in the center here. It's an industrial building, approximately five thousand square feet. The Danny Details garage is right here. There's a single-family home right here. There's a former greenhouse that's used for storage right there. And there's an old stormwater basin that was built some time ago that doesn't comply with the current standards, but has some kind of stormwater function nonetheless, that's in this area here.
All right. And the applicant, could you describe for the board the improvements that are going to be performed on the site if this were approved?
So the stormwater presently reaches a basin that's in this area here. It reaches it by overflow and flow. And basically, we're taking that stormwater management improvement and making it compliant with the current stormwater regulations, which involves some work to get there. And that's what we've worked with Charlie's office on. And, and we're not changing the drainage patterns out there. We're actually maintaining them.
And there's no, there's no increase of impervious coverage or anything associated with this approval, or this application, I should say, correct?
Correct.
Is there any site lighting proposed or existing?
There's some lighting out there now, nothing's proposed.
So whatever is on site will remain?
Correct.
There's also a dumpster area on site?
Yes.
Which is also an existing location?
Correct.
And that's, we're not proposing to change that yet either, is that correct?
Correct.
On the screen, on the screen that's in front of the board, again, just to orient the board, if you're on Asbury Avenue, there's a driveway at the very bottom of Asbury, that's the site driveway, access driveway?
Correct.
Below that is Earl.
Correct.
To the right of that driveway is the single-family home that fronts on Asbury?
That's correct.
And then behind that is the Danny Details space, correct?
It's that white one right there.
Okay, fine. And then the, the larger building where Freehold Welding is, is the one in the center?
That's correct.
And then the greenhouse is the one at the top of the screen?
That's correct.
That landscaping that's shown adjacent to the area where the stormwater currently exists, and then to the rear of the property, that's all existing mature landscaping?
Yes, and that doesn't get disturbed. We worked around that.
So there's no tree removal proposed?
There's a couple of trees that get removed east of that dense bed of white pines, right there and right there.
And that's for stormwater management purposes?
Correct. That's to get the basin to work. So that's on the interior of that dense line of white pines along the west side of the property.
Okay. The, the parking lot, there's no curbing or anything proposed, and no pavement proposed, it's all existing conditions, is that correct?
Correct.
The Danny's Detail, Detailing Building, which is the one behind the house, how does the, that tenant get access to the space for the detail work?
Shares the driveway coming off of Asbury Ave.
So the back of that building is where the bay is?
Yes, pointed out to the south.
Okay. And then the bays for the Freehold Welding building are facing Earl, is that correct?
Correct, they face east, yes.
They face east, thank you.
North is to the right on that area.
And focusing only on the engineering, I assume you've had an opportunity to review the reports from CM, from T and M, sorry, and Jennifer, for planning. Are there any technical comments that you're, that you are not able to address as a condition of approval?
No.
Okay. There's really not a lot of engineering, because it's mainly uses, but we will defer to your professionals.
Okay, we'll start with Charlie.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So just to clarify, the site as a whole, I believe in the late nineties, it got a subdivision approval. There's two single-family residential lots to the south of the subject property. Believe in some discussions with the applicant, those are currently residences by the two brothers who are the owners of Freehold Welding. As part of that subdivision, there was some buffering landscaping requirements that appears along the southerly property line, the westerly property line. That was case number two sixty-four dash twenty-three. You can see there was some existing depression storage that was proposed at that time for stormwater management purposes. In part of our review with Mr. Argen, you know, there was some areas of stone that had expanded through the years that didn't have any means of capture for stormwater management. We asked that they provide stormwater management for those We asked that they provide stormwater management for those as it exceeded the thresholds for a major development, not over an acre of disturbance, but very close over the quarter acre of impervious coverage, regulated motor vehicle surface. The applicant's current proposal, if I can just bring up the grading plan real quickly, I'll make sure I get it on that screen. Basically, that gravel area will flow over land into a, we'll call it a floor bay, that provides storage for smaller storm event, winter quality storm, allows particulates to settle out for maintenance purposes, and then that discharges to a larger sand-bottom infiltration basin, which allows water to naturally discharge through percolation. And then they have a little structure, basically a weir and the earthen berm for the basin to allow overflow. That basically mimics the existing drainage patterns from what the prior subdivision approval was. This is a lower resolution, but basically it overflowed to the southwest corner of the property, to those two residential developments that were created at that time of that prior subdivision. I guess, Sal, is the applicant going to provide some testimony in regard in the operations for Freehold?
Operations and engineering, yes.
Okay. Okay. So really, we met, I think, under the applicant's prior attorney to talk about the expansion of the stone, and that's what kind of prompted this to come into a site plan. The applicant has done their proper due diligence, you know, meeting with us, having their professionals meet with us, to get it to a point where you're considering it now. There's some technical comments with the stormwater that just need to be addressed. I'm confident we can handle that as a condition of any board approval. That's really all I have from an engineering perspective right now.
Great, thanks.
So, Mr. Fitzpatrick, are you going to run through the waivers because they're really more engineering and technical in nature than planning? And then, secondly, the question is, I understand that the applicants live in the homes immediately adjacent, and there's access through the property to those homes, which I take no exception to. It's not typical, right? But it makes sense considering they're immediately adjacent, and that would prevent cars from going out onto the road and looping around. I would just ask, Sal, in the event that those homes were to transfer to somebody else, that that accessway be closed?
Yeah, I discussed that with both of the owners who live in the houses, one of whom you'll leave momentarily, and they have agreed that if either house is sold, that driveway to that house will be closed off for multiple reasons that Jennifer indicates, and they don't want that homeowner getting to their business either, so we've taken it's both sides. We have no issue with that.
Okay, so I just, I mean, so I just want you guys to walk through the waivers. There's a number of them. I know there's variances, and I'm sure Allison will cover that when she gets up here, but there's waivers with respect to lighting, parking, loading, sidewalk, buffering. I mean, buffering's a variant, so I'm assuming that Allison's going to handle that, but just those waivers because they're more engineering in nature, and typically Allison doesn't cover that kind of stuff?
That's fine, go ahead, Tim. And we're going to read off of, I guess, we have Charlie's report, page four outlines them, and I think that's the same that you identified, Tim, but if we miss one, we'll recover it. Go ahead, Charlie.
Okay, on the lighting, there's some lighting mounted on the building that was adequate. It's directed away from the neighbors. And we thought that we didn't have to make any changes to that. It's not directed towards, everything kind of spills out towards Earl. It just seemed like it worked. There's one light that's pointed towards Danny Details and two that are pointed towards Earl. I revised the plan from what I submitted to the engineer.
So I'm really referring to the minimum .3-foot candle and the average of .5 that it appears to me you're not meeting, not so much like the spillage, but like the overall lighting. I will say for the record, and the board is intimately aware, that we pretty much grant this waiver with almost every single application that comes before us. It's not typical for an application to comply, but can you just talk about like the minimum and the average for candles?
I don't have the numbers. We didn't do a detailed analysis of the lighting.
So to clarify, there's no like pole-mounted site lighting? Anything that's lighting those areas is mounted to the existing building, right? That house is Freehold Welding?
Correct.
All right. And I guess maybe this will tie into like the operational with like hours and things like that?
I agree. I think the operation might take care of some of this.
Can you talk about the buffering, you know, touch on that a little bit more?
Charlie, you want me to talk about the buffers or the curbing first?
Talk about the buffering.
Okay. The heavy red dotted line is the 50-foot buffer.
Could you speak up just a little just so we can get...
The heavy red dotted line is the 50-foot buffer. We've got a little piece of the basin that gets increased in that buffer, and the greenhouse building that's used for storage is also in that buffer.
But none of the activity you just described is going to impact that dense landscape buffer that currently exists, is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, and that's to the, what is that? I don't see the directional arrow. What's the top?
Top is west. So on the west side, that line of trees extends about 25 feet off of the property, off of the propeller, maybe a little more.
And then the southern leaf tree area also would not be impacted by this?
That's correct.
So that the foot candle issue, in your opinion, the foot candles don't impact any of the jointing property owner?
No, we didn't see that, no.
Sherry, have you been to the site?
I haven't been out to the site, just looked with Google and Street View.
Okay, I'm just curious, you mentioned white pines. Is there any? Looks like a lot of white pines.
Yeah, the white pines, I mean, I'm sure at some point they'll be very tall and won't have that lower buffer.
Okay.
However, I'm assuming that was part of the plans, that they were approved to install white pines with the previous subdivision.
Yeah, back then, I know the white pines were the thing to go with.
They were the go-to.
Is there any shade trees or anything in that buffer? Do we know of?
I think it's a strict monoculture of pines.
Okay, so it's all evergreens, okay. Don't know anything further.
Mr. Chair, I mean, the buffering, the properties to the northwest and south are all residential, and there's limited buffering. Now, understanding that this is an existing condition, and in reality, these uses are out there and operating, but they need relief for the buffer along the northern, western, and southerly property lines, and so, you know, that's just, it's not just that one section that requires that buffer. The residence that's kind of off Asbury Avenue is not buffered at all, so it's more than...
We can address, okay.
Right, it's just more than just the one.
So what are we looking to do there then to address that?
Well, we're not proposing any additional plantings, again, because everything to the north is an existing condition that we're not contaminating or impacting in any way, so that's why we didn't propose anything. But as you'll hear from the applicant, they're very good neighbors, and whatever they can do to address it, sort of, the board professionals have to show a little cooperation.
I mean, Sal, I think there needs to be something between your operations and that residence. I mean, I get that you guys are good neighbors, but we've required applicants to buffer houses on existing industrial properties on the same lot in the past. That's not an unusual practice of the board?
Yeah.
You know, and the buffer is a requirement that, I mean, you know, it's been in my letter since April, to be perfectly clear. So I think you need to do more than nothing. So I'm going to look to see, and I'm going to defer to Sherry on what she wants to see there, but there needs to be something. Does it have to be 50 feet? No, I think that would be onerous to the site, but there needs to be some significant buffering to buffer that house because...
You're talking about the house that, you're talking about the area north of the greenhouse?
Yes. Isn't that a house right here?
This is a house.
Yeah.
So those are two single-family houses on Asbury.
Yep, I know.
Yeah, I mean, they're good...
And the requirement means you're supposed to buffer them, so yeah.
I mean, they're good neighbors now, but you know, that could always change, and...
My client, the house to the east, the one adjacent to Earl, is on our property owned by my clients, and then the one above it is also owned by them in a different company name, but they...
It doesn't matter, honestly.
I understand we're willing to work with you.
Yeah, I mean, Sherry can come up with some creative ways to buffer it, whether it's landscaping, a combination of fencing and landscaping, but there needs to be something. You're still going to need the relief because they're clearly not going to get the 50 feet, but there needs to be some buffer. Because I agree, at some point, those homes may be owned by somebody else, and that could become problematic.
Yeah.
Okay. There's other waivers. Why don't we just run through those so we can make sure the record's complete?
For the curbing, in that it's a welding steel-type use, the curbing didn't seem appropriate. We requested a waiver for that.
What section are you referring? Oh, this is Charlie's letter, because I'm looking in my letters online.
Keep going through Charlie, and then we'll cover yours.
Pavement section, what we had there worked. It's crushed down, and it's working very well. It's blended, and we request a waiver there. Trash enclosure. The dumpster is on the east side of the property along Earl.
Are you providing an enclosure? Because we asked for a masonry enclosure, which we ask for every application.
You do, and we discuss, and I know you do.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we concur.
We did discuss it with the client. The issue, and we could address it, the issue was in its current location. It's near the Earl property line, and there's a restriction on structures that we install. So if, and you really can't see it from anywhere except, I guess, the house to the east in this buffer, but if you want a masonry enclosure, we can relocate the dumpster away from Earl, put it somewhere else on site, because I should see plenty of locations, and then we can do an enclosure. But I think there's a 17-foot restriction, my client said, where you can't have any permanent structures located next to Earl for whatever reason, but they treadle the government, so they make the most. So yes, we can comply with that if the board wants to. Right now, it's not landscaped. There's a fence that buffers it from the streets, so you can't see it from the driveway in the street, but that's all that's there.
Okay, so Earl is on the bottom of the screen?
The entire bottom, yes.
Okay.
So I don't know if it's on that aerial, but I was on the site Friday, and it is, it was down to the right of your arrow, about there.
Okay.
That's it, yeah. Those are the dumpsters, and there's a fence to the right of that area. But if the board wants a masonry structure and enclosure and landscaping, which is typically what Jennifer wants, we'll have to work with the staff to move it somewhere else on site so it doesn't create any variances and also doesn't violate the Earl restrictions.
Yeah, I think that would be good if you could do that.
Go ahead, Tim, continue.
A number of loading spaces. There's not a lot of loading going on here. I think the owner will discuss his operations. Their own trucks coming in and out, starting in the morning, finishing there in the day, I believe. Parking works the same way. There's not a high need for parking out there. I think some of the, I think the owner will probably discuss it. Some of the employees probably drive their own cars and take a truck to the job and come back. Sidewalks, again, you're in somewhat of a light industrial use here. We request a waiver there. It just didn't seem like it was appropriate.
Regardless of the area, there's residential all around you. Is there sidewalk in the neighborhood?
I didn't see, I was there Friday. I didn't see any sidewalks. Mr. Drone, when he comes up, he'd probably answer that better since they've been there their entire lives, but I don't think so.
I don't believe there is.
It looks like there's some on the road, quail, run, court. It looks like there's sidewalks there, not too far away.
It's just curbing.
Curbing.
Yes, it's curbing.
Zooming in.
I mean, once again, I would defer to the board, but you know, we don't always have an opportunity to get sidewalk, but if there is no sidewalk, do you know how far away this site is from the nearest school, nearest high school?
High school?
Yeah, and the reason I'm asking is because the school district decided that they're not busing kids less than three miles from the nearest school, and so the sidewalk network is becoming critically important, and you do have a house on your property. So if you're less than three miles from, I would think Colsonak High School is probably the closest, then it's something that the board may want to consider, because I know that has been a hot-ticket item here in town.
We'll ask the applicant when he comes up.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
Silly question. The charts say Asbury Avenue. In the case that's on the paper, it says Asbury Road. There is an Asbury Road and an Asbury Avenue in Howell. It should say Asbury Avenue in the statement.
It is Asbury Avenue.
Yeah, it says Asbury Road on here.
And they're notice on the agenda, or?
I'm looking, case number was the applicant for 167, 169 Asbury Road. Also, it has the block, but it...
It is Asbury Avenue.
Okay, so I will...
Sorry.
And Mr. Chair, if I could just, I want to touch on a couple of the things that Mr. Fitzgerald just said. So with regard, Fitzpatrick, I apologize, with regards to the waiver for the curbing and the pavement section on the site, we cited it only for the area that was expanded prior to, or after the late 90s subdivision approval. The balance of the site appears to be roughly in accordance with what was approved at that time. This had a lot of gravel storage and parking, you know, along, adjacent to Earl. So that waiver that we said it was just for this expanded area. Anytime you're putting in curbing, you're channelizing stormwater runoff either into curb cuts or to drainage. This, putting in the curbing, I think would be counterproductive to the design that they have. Right now, everything kind of just sheet flows into the overland basin, so putting in curb and channelizing that would, you know, potentially, you know, speed up the rate that water gets to that basin, cause some scour, so I don't take issue to that. As far as the pavement, as far as the pavement section, we'll hear from the applicant regarding what kind of vehicles are stored on the site and things like that. In the past, on similar type applications where there's been like heavy equipment or like diesel equipment, which require those to be stored on concrete so you don't get that leaching into the groundwater and things like that, we'll leave to hear from the applicant on what kind of equipment and where they store those. Thanks.
I agree. Anybody on the board have any more questions for this witness? Okay, I think we can now move to the operations testimony. 2.3 miles. 2.3...
2.3 miles. Do you swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you out? Please state your name to the record and spell your last.
Scott Drone, D-R-O-N-N-E.
And Scott, what is your affiliation with Freehold Welding, Inc.?
I'm the owner, a part-owner of Freehold Welding, Inc., with my brother, Todd.
And Todd's here tonight as well, right?
Yes, yes.
And when you heard Charlie describe the subdivision that occurred many years ago, there were two houses to the south?
Yes.
Those are your, one's your house, one's your brother's house, correct?
Yes, yep.
And you heard what we agreed to, that if either of you were to sell your houses or house, we would close off the access to the back. That's okay with you?
Absolutely.
All right, so let's talk a little, first, before we get into operations, let's discuss briefly the history of this property. Can you describe for the board how Freehold, well, first of all, this property was part of a larger tract of land, is that correct?
Yes. Yes, many people come to our shop and they're like, hey, I never knew you were here. And I'm like, yeah, we've been here a while. And well, how long you been here? I said, since 1922. So our great grandparents bought the land in 1922. It was mostly in Earl, there was probably six years to 100 acres that they owned. And in 1942, Earl came along, took most of the land, left him with about nine acres. And they had about 30 days to get all of their, all of their stuff off the property. They took like an old barn off the property and put it onto the nine acres. That originally was attached to the Danny Details building, which we tore down in lieu of building the shop. But through the years, I would say, my uncle that built that little house there, his parents gave him a portion of the land to build a house on. He built a house, they didn't have any children, him and my aunt. So that little house up front, that little bungalow, he, not that one, that one right there, yes. So he built that house and then in the, I would say, late 30s, early 40s, he built that shop. That's the Danny Details building, right? And that's where he started his welding business. He was a welder, a mechanic, a carpenter, and a farmer. So they farmed all the land and they, he was the first one around to have a welder in 1940. So a lot of the farmers would, you know, break equipment and they'd bring it over to my uncle. And also, my dad was working with him. And, you know, through the years that they repaired equipment for people and we've got some affidavits from other farmers, you might see some affidavits that we turned in for about seven or eight different people that did business with my uncle and my dad through the years. And then in the 70s, of course, you know, I was born in 1960, but in the 70s, you know, I always hear my uncle out there welding, he had the old generator running and the Sparks always mesmerized me, I always liked it. And that's when I started welding, like, you know, as a teenager. And so we just continued the business. And in 1983, my dad said, well, why don't you start, get a name for the business? So I went down to the county at the paperwork and filled out, you know, the paperwork for Freehold Welding, that was the name. And so I brought the paperwork home, my dad said to me, well, what'd you name it? And I said, Freehold Welding. He goes, we're in Howell. So I said, yeah, but this is Freehold Address, and I went to Freehold High School. And he's like, okay, so it's Howell, but okay, it's Freehold Welding. So we named it Freehold Welding. And then, you know, a few years later, we were just doing our welding business there. The old barn that was taken off of the Earl property was very dilapidated, so my dad said, let's tear it down, but we'll get a permit to build a new building. So I went to the town, he got a permit, and he built the welding shop, the big building. And that's where we commenced our, you know, more welding services. And the old barn was tore down because it was, you know, infested with termites and whatever. It wasn't safe for welding anymore. So in 1990, my great uncle had passed away and my father just continued the work and I was, you know, I'm working full-time in the business. And then I would say in 1995, 96, we, you know, we took my brother in as a partner and we expanded our, basically our work, we made a living there, you know? So we were born and raised on that same property and that's how we made a living.
So now, the welding business, which was located in the smaller building behind the house, after Freehold Welding was relocated from that building to the larger new building, who occupied the smaller building?
We, there was a guy came along, his name was Desi Smythe, and he had a company called Industrial Repairs, which repaired paint sprayers and line strippers and pressure washers. And he was there for about 20 years. And, you know, we always had a building fire inspected every year and everything was good. And then he retired and a couple of years back and Danny came along and we figured it was a nice fit and we put him in there and he was detailing cars. And that's what it is today.
Okay, so now, let's talk a little bit about the operation. Let's first focus on Freehold Welding. What are the hours of operation on site?
About 7:00 to 4:30, 5 o'clock, something like that.
And what days of the week?
Five days a week, Monday through Friday.
Okay, so the lighting that Tim described on the building, is that adequate for your operation?
Oh, yeah, it lights up the whole yard at night. I mean, if anybody comes in there, you could, you know, we have cameras on the property, you can see them. It's...
But those lights, they're not on all night?
No, they're photoshelled.
So they're triggered by...
One on the front of the shop that faces Danny Details and two facing Earl. And they're large lights, high pressure sodium or...
But what hours are they on?
Oh, just, they're dusk to dawn. They come on at dusk and go off at dawn.
And they're on timers?
And they're on, yeah, photoshelled.
Okay, okay. And then, how many employees do you have currently?
We have about eight employees, including Todd and I, and we have a secretary who works in the office.
How frequent, well, I guess, what portion of your business occurs onsite versus offsite?
It goes up and down, but I would say it's 50/50. We have some welding trucks that we do service work and go onsite. But it probably averages out to be about 50/50, between shop repairs and shop fabrication. But sometimes you might not see anybody come in the yard for welding and they'll, we'll be onsite. Our guys may, you may not see them for a week or two, you know?
Could you describe what the welding, what type of private weld?
Sure, we do anything from landscape trailers to custom truck hitches. You know, anything you can't buy a hitch for, we custom build it, like box trucks and landscape, landscaper dump, small dumps. And any kind of metal fabrication, structural steel for small buildings. You know, we have, we'll get plans from engineers and we'll lay out a bunch of 50,000 pounds of steel and we'll drill the holes in it so we can take it to onsite and install it. And anything from lawn chairs and lawn mowers. People stop by with a pot they've had for 50 years and they want to weld the handle back on it. So, you know, it's not uncommon if someone could bring something so simple as that, you know?
The, all that activity you just discussed, that all occurs within that larger building?
Yes, yep.
None of the welding occurs outside?
No, no.
The, can you describe for the board the types of vehicles that you own first?
Sure, we have some service trucks. Basically, they're maybe considered F-350s, F-450s, dual-wheel trucks with a utility body, with a rack on top with a few welders on it. And we've got three service trucks plus a couple pickups.
And then in terms of deliveries of other types of vehicles that might visit the site other than the garbage waste hauler, can you describe what types of vehicles come and how frequently they may come?
Yeah, we get maybe a straight job from, you know, steel delivery for maybe once every two weeks to maybe, a tractor trailer, maybe a month or every two months, you know, if it's a larger load of steel. But that's rare anymore. Now, we go to Fazio, you guys heard of Fazio's over in Farmingdale and Howell, you know? We go to there, we pick up anything we need and a lot of it's delivered to the site too. Like structural steel, we do, if we're doing a decking or something, we'll have it delivered right to the site.
Site meaning offsite?
Offsite, yeah, yep.
Do you perform any mechanical work on your vehicles onsite?
Minimal. Services are done outside to usually a local place, Freehold Tire Pros in Freehold or a couple of places we go, but, you know, our trucks are pretty new so we don't require much other than just a minimal service.
So when you say minimal, what does that mean?
We might do, you know, lights that go out in a vehicle.
What about like oil changes, flushing the fluids and stuff like that?
No, we don't service our own vehicles, we go it out to the service center.
You mentioned the larger building that you built in the 90s. You did indicate you received the building from Infra.
Yes.
So that, you have all the approvals at the time?
Yes, yep.
Okay. Utilities, how are the, how is, let's again focus on your building. What utilities service that building?
We have underground service from Asbury Avenue to the building and that consists of, you know, JCP&amp;L underground wire and also Optimum for cable. And the well is located up near the bungalow in the front, where my Uncle Joe's original house. The well comes from there and it's, you know, pumped underground to the building.
You mentioned before, an office employee, is there an office space within that larger building?
Yeah, it's a, it's a second floor, maybe 11 by 11 office for our office administrator.
And that's it, no other clerical work?
No, no.
Billing and everything else is done there?
Yep.
Do you have any hazardous material stored onsite or used onsite?
No, no.
You heard me talk with the board planner about the refuse container and we talked about relocating that. You have no issue with that?
No, no, we want to do whatever's right there for that.
And the, how frequently is the garbage pickup?
Once a week.
Once a week?
Yeah.
And you have a dumpster for recycling and for regular waste?
Yes.
Is there, if you're working on, if there's a vehicle that spills within the building, do you have any measures in place to deal with any spills?
Yeah, we have a couple five-gallon buckets for spill containment kits, you know, in the building. So if a truck leaks oil or whatever, but it's a rare occasion. I don't think we've ever had any oil spills on the property.
Is there any signage existing and are you proposing any change to the signage?
There's a sign out front that's been there for many years up on Asbury Avenue. So when you come into the property, there's a sign there. And there's also one on the building, next to the lighting, front northeast corner of the front of the building.
Both existing conditions?
Yep, existing, yeah, been here many years.
The, can you describe if there's any outdoor activity onsite during your business? If we're not talking about Danny Details at all yet, in your business, any outdoor activity?
No, no, just basically when a vehicle comes in, we park it along the fence until we get to it and it just goes in the building and we do the work in the building.
All right, and do you have, is there any waste, getting about normal garbage waste? Is there any like steel or any type of waste that's generated?
Yeah, we have a recycling container for the metals. We have two small ones that are for aluminum and we keep that separate. And then we have a large container, 20-yard container for A&amp;A truck parts. Have you ever heard of them? They, they'll dump it maybe every two months.
And where are those?
That's located in the back of the building along, it's actually where the for-bay is going to be. Right now, it's right to the left a little more, right there's the dumpster, right there, you can see, that's the dumpster. But we can, we can put that anywhere once the for-bay's in. That's where the for-bay is going to be, right there.
Okay, now Danny Detailing, you did describe the prior uses of that front building. Can you describe, how many employees work for Danny's Detail?
Scott, Nick works there and there's another part-time guy. So two people maximum.
And what do they do onsite?
They just wax cars, vacuum them, clean them out, just buff them, polish them. Do the wheels and stuff like that, clean them up.
There's one bay to that building?
Yes.
And is that where the buffing and polishing occur?
Yes, yep, all inside.
And then, I see cars that are parked a little below that entrance, is that either employees or other cars?
Probably, yeah, I would say.
And how much traffic is generated when you're there? You're there every day, I assume, right?
Yeah, for the most part, yeah.
So what kind of activity do you see from that?
Two to three, four cars a day, maybe, you know?
And his hours of operation?
Same as ours, same time. It's 7:00, 7:30 to 4:00, something like 4:30, something like that.
All right, does he have weekend hours as well?
No, no, they do mobile service also.
I think that covers, well, let me just check my notes. Oh, the buffering, you heard the discussion we had about buffering your commercial uses to the residences?
Yeah, I didn't really understand that.
All right, but we're gonna, we're not going to resolve that tonight, but we're going to work with the board professionals to come up with a solution to address their problems.
Yeah, I just didn't know where they, we're talking about, I know the greenhouse is there, but the other lot to the right, that building here, that's a separate lot. That's, you know, that's not the lot that we're concerned about right here.
Right, so you're required to buffer
Yeah.
your site from any residential use or zone. So regardless of whether it's offsite.
Okay, she's saying along that line between the welding...
There's multiple locations, there's multiple locations that we're going to have to put something. And I would suggest that your professionals just work with the three of us, you know, to figure out what's, where the best location would be and then Shari will talk about what's best to do it.
Yeah, I just didn't know where that meant, what that meant, but now we do.
Okay, the other question was the sidewalks. Where's the closest sidewalk that you could, that you know of to your property?
Well, closest sidewalk is on Red Fox, in the front of all those five lots right there. Yep, down Red Fox, there's one sidewalk right along there. Asbury Avenue has no sidewalks.
Do you know how close you are to any of the high schools?
We're three miles.
You're two miles.
Two miles? Is it two miles?
You're two miles from Colsonak High School.
Okay, and there's no sidewalks on Five Points, the head there, head there. And Quail across the street has no sidewalks at all.
No, I understand, so it's going to be up to the board whether they want to accept the contribution or they want you to put the sidewalk in along your frontage.
Yeah.
And the reason this has become an issue recently is that Freehold Regional School District recently determined that kids that live three miles or less from the high school have to walk. So, or get a ride, but, so it's become quite an issue here in town. I mean, this might be a little bit much, just considering like what we're dealing with, but it has been an issue, I would be remiss if I didn't raise it and ultimately the board can decide whether they want you to put in sidewalk to make the contribution.
Absolutely, I get that.
And then, one final question, the greenhouse building, that's used for storage only?
Yep, that was built in the early 90s, late 80s and it was a greenhouse and Uncle Joe grew plants in it for the farm. And then we just, after the plastic went bad, we just covered it with a tarp, you know, and it was a fabric that was made for covering greenhouses. And it's a permanent, you know, structure basically and we store overage, you know, there. We have an old tractor that was on the property, we store there, an old truck. Just didn't want to get rid of that stuff because it was family heirloom, so we keep it in there. And some, you know, maybe some scaffolding and so forth.
That's all the operational testimony.
Are you looking at any point down the road expanding your business or are you pretty well set where you are?
We're pretty well set where we are.
Okay, because we just want to make sure you have, know, if you're thinking about expanding, you might as well put your cards in.
No, I think we're good.
Okay.
Just to follow up on Charlie's report, his wording proposes to expand the Freehold welding use. What are we talking about, expanding what?
Was that maybe because of the stone lot in the back that we expanded, Charles?
Yeah, so I think it's kind of twofold. So it's definitely the expansion of the stone to the south that wasn't there at the time of the prior subdivision approval. And I think also with the history of the welding moving from the smaller building to the larger building. Originally, they were coming in for certificate of non-conformity, but now since they changed the building to a bigger building, I think it's technically an expansion of the use, I guess you could say. But by and large, if you heard the applicant's testimony, they've been in that building operating for some time. You know, at least at the time of the prior subdivision approval, they were operating out of that larger building. I have a question for the applicant. So I think you said there was up to two or three, like F-350, F-450s that you used?
Yeah, we had an International, which is the size of like an F-550. We're taking that out of service now because it's a 1995, so. We have a Dodge 550, which is the same, basically Ford, same size as a Ford 550. We have a Chevy 2003 Kodiak and a Ford F-350.
Are they all diesel, gasoline?
No, we have two diesels and one gas.
So, you know, typically in the past, on applications where we've had like asphalt paved parking areas where they're having diesel parking, we've required those spaces designated for the diesel parking to be concrete so you don't get the asphalt washing away or eaten away with the diesel drippings. For this instance, it's all being stone. Providing concrete for that would help that stuff from not, you know, getting into the groundwater. So I'll leave it to the board, I think it's something we've required in the past on similar type applications. You know, he said he's got two diesel vehicles, so you're looking at maybe like a 20 by 20 pad for those spaces. I'll leave it up to the board on that. And then, just for the Danny Details, you said buffing, waxing and things like that, vacuuming the insides, do they do any like car washing?
No.
Okay.
No, he told me that cars go to the car wash and they come there. Nothing comes there muddy or, you know, requires any power washing or anything like that.
Okay, yeah, so we're not getting a lot of runoff and soap and all that kind of stuff?
No.
Okay. I think that's all I have for the operations.
If I could just comment about, our trucks are stored in the building at nighttime. We have a really nice operation, people are really impressed with our welding shop, it's really clean. We don't, you know, we don't have... We don't, you know, we don't have piles of stuff in our building. Every night the trucks go in, they don't sit outside all night. And if that helps, it, you know, you know.
Well, if that was no stipulation that they were parked inside, can we?
I think that's an appropriate condition of approval. And we've done that on similar type of landscaping with mason dumps and things like that where they've been parked inside, I think that's acceptable.
So you're, you're okay keeping them parked inside?
Absolutely. We, it makes our trucks last longer. Our trucks look brand new, you know, they just, because we keep them inside and, you know, through the winter, I mean, they just go out in the daytime or they go to jobs and then they come home and they, they go in the building, you know? And I think it's a great, it's a good habit our debt, you know, instilled in us years ago, keep your trucks inside, they'll last longer.
Is everybody good with that? Because I mean, that's one of the things we have to, I think just keeping them inside would be appropriate. Okay.
So, I apologize, I just want to clarify to make sure. So it was for the Freehold welding, it was eight employees typically. One of those is an office personnel and it's like 50/50 onsite versus off-site. And then the Danny Details was two maximum employees?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, Jennifer, do you have anything to?
No, I think I asked the questions as we kind of went through, so I'm good.
Yeah, okay. Okay, unless there's any more questions from the board, we can.
So I think at this point, we don't want to bring our planner up because we need to address landscaping or can we do that as a condition of approval, Jennifer?
I would submit that understanding the operations and it's been here for a while and the applicant's willing to, willingness to work with us, I would take no exception if the board was okay with it that we deal with that as a condition of approval. Because these guys have been operating for a long time. I think that they're here, they've done 99% of what we've asked, so it's up to you, but I'm okay.
I honestly agree with you 100% and I, is everybody okay with that?
Yep.
Okay.
Allison?
Oh, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth to help you guide?
Yes, I do.
Please state your name for the record and spell your last.
Allison Coffin, C-O-F-F-I-N.
Okay, so we don't have to go through our qualifications.
Yep.
Yeah, I think you've got to memorize by now anyway.
You're a licensed professional planner?
Yes, I am still licensed.
You understand, you heard the testimony tonight, you're familiar with the site and you understand the variance relief that we need?
Yes.
Would you place the necessary proofs on the record, please?
Sure, so the applicant's requesting a D2 variance to expand the pre-existing welding use. It's expanded over the years, so we're going to just cover all of that expansion in a D2 variance. And a D1 variance for the automotive detailing tenant, which occupies the site without the benefit of review from this board. And the other variance relief that's being requested tonight is related to the buffering, which is a pre-existing condition, but the applicant's willing to work with the board professionals to beef up what's there. It's my opinion that special reasons exist for the granting of the use variances for this site and that the site is particularly suited to the proposed uses and there's no significant detriment to the zone plan or surrounding residential properties that would result from the continued occupancy of this site with the industrial uses. Looking first at the D2 variance, the special reasons exist for the granting of the requested D2 variance to expand the pre-existing non-conforming use. The New Jersey Supreme Court in the Burbidge versus the governing body of Mine Hill Township decision examined the criteria that a board would use when considering a D2 variance to expand a pre-existing non-conforming use. The court determined that the special reasons concept is applied to the expansion of an existing non-conforming use, things like appearance, aesthetics and compatibility of the use with the surrounding neighborhood become uniquely significant, especially if there is no evidence that the use will be discontinued. There is no evidence in this case that this use is going to be discontinued. Their pre-existing non-conforming use, the welding business on this site and the presence of multiple uses on the property has expanded over the years to its current extent, which is shown on the aerial on the screen. The applicant, the application tonight helps to clearly define the extent and limits of the onsite activities, including defining the extent of cleared area on the site that's used for circulation and parking, identifying the landscape buffering that currently exists to the residential neighbors. There's a landscape buffer that consists of mature evergreens on the western and part of the southern side of the lot. These evergreens appear to have been planted in part of the 1995 subdivision. They're now mature and thick. They appear to be more than 30 feet in height in areas. I could see them over the houses on the neighboring street. So they provide a substantial visual screen between the uses where they exist and the applicant's going to work with the board professionals to beef up the rest of the property lines that are adjacent residential uses or the residents on the site. But the biggest impact that the applicant's proposing at this time is an improvement to the site function by providing an improved stormwater management facility that's built to current standards, which replaces a much more informal stormwater management system on the site at present. When it comes to the D1 variance for the automotive detailing use, it's my opinion that the site is particularly suited to this automotive detailing tenant. The site has historically contained light industrial uses and that dates back to the 1940s. The site is relatively isolated, being located at the dead end of Asbury Avenue where it terminates at Earl. The site has multiple industrial structures, not all of which are currently used by Freehold Welding. And the mobile automotive detailing use is an ideal tenant for the space. It has only two employees, very limited customer activity to the site. The majority of the automotive detailing use happens off-site at its customers' properties. These D variances can be granted without detriment. Again, the site has functioned with light industrial uses since the 1940s. The majority of the business activities for both uses take place off-site with only a very small number of customers coming to this property, this relatively isolated piece of land. The expansion to the current extent has happened slowly over the years without detriment and the proposed stormwater facility mitigates the previously not up to standard stormwater management that was happening on the site. There's no impact, in my opinion, to visual character. The industrial activity is screened from the roadway by the house at the front and from most of the adjacent homes to the west and south by mature evergreen buffers. And again, that buffering will be beefed up with the applicant working with the board's professionals. And it's my opinion that there is no impact to the other neighbor, Earl. The proposed bulk variances for buffering can be granted without detriment. The bulk variance relief is, again, it's all related to the buffering ordinance and the site cannot provide an undisturbed 50-foot-deep conforming buffer, but the intent of the ordinance is being met by the existing landscaping on the site as well as landscaping that the applicant has agreed to install tonight. To the north, the site appears as a residential, as the home is located on the frontage and screens the non-residential uses on the site from view from the street. And these variances would not substantially impair the intent and purpose of your master plan or development ordinance. This welding business is a pre-existing non-conforming use on the site. The non-residential use of the site predates zoning and the use has expanded in place over the years as the business grew. And a tenant was brought in as building space was being underutilized as the main business change. But this is a unique situation and an isolated property. And the development, the continued use and development of this site with the pre-existing uses and the industrial character would not have a substantial impact on the larger ARE2 zone. And for those reasons, it's my opinion that the variances can be granted without detriment to the health, safety and general welfare of the public, nor would they result in a use of the site which would substantially cause a detriment to your master plan and development ordinance.
Thank you, Allison.
Thank you, Allison.
I don't take any exception to the, to the testimony. I think if this use was located maybe someplace else in town, we would have more to talk about. But they've been there for a very long time. Given the massive public outcry in the audience, I would venture to guess that they are a, a good neighbor and they've been willing to work with us since the beginning. So, you know, they've worked, they've been working with all three of us since they came in several years ago and have agreed to continue to do so. So I don't take any exception to the testimony as, as presented.
Okay, so right now, we're pretty much, we have to kind of decide what we want to do with the sidewalks.
And we have to open it to the public?
Yeah, I'm going to do that, too.
Yeah, there is, there is somebody here from the public.
Yeah, I'm going to get to that. So I just wanted to get the rundown with the board first and then the public wants to comment on the sidewalks and.
May I ask you a question about the sidewalks? Would the sidewalk run along Asbury Avenue and dead end at Earl?
It would just be along their frontage on Asbury Avenue and yes, dead end into Earl.
And the school's on the other side of Earl, correct?
The school's, no, out to the top of the screen, out and to the north.
So there is the terminus of the road.
It wouldn't, they're not on the other side of Earl, they're, they're.
But there is a possibility that somebody might have to walk from that house.
In theory, I mean, I can tell you, my kids don't walk five feet, so I'm venturing to guess that the parents are probably going to drive them, but.
Got you.
But in theory, based upon this latest determination from the school district. But to be fair, their sidewalk, which is basically the end of Asbury, isn't really helping the kids that live like beyond that, right? It'd be one thing if they were on the other side.
Yeah, that's, it's on the dead end.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's a good point, Glenn.
Would it be a section of sidewalk before it was the?
I'd rather a sidewalk go in some part of town that really can use it than worry about it down in area. So is that pretty much our consensus?
I agree, sir.
Agree.
Okay, we'll at this time open up to the public, so I'll need a motion for that.
Motion to open a public.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
The board will now be open to the public.
You have another Sal here, by the way.
Oh.
Doesn't happen.
That doesn't happen to you very often.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Anywhere you want.
Hello.
Good evening. State your name for the record.
My name is Sal, my last name is Gar Giulo, it's G-A-R-G-I-U-L-O.
Can we, can you just raise your hand?
Yes, sir.
Swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth to help you guide?
I do, sir.
Okay, what, where do you live?
I'm on the corner of Asbury, I apologize, my wife and I, my wife and I and our four children are on the corner of Red Fox and Asbury Avenue.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, that is correct.
Was it 10 Asbury?
No.
Is it Asbury or Red Fox?
Red Fox, Red Fox. My backyard goes directly to Scott and Todd's father's former house and sadly, he had to live with my children. And they were wonderful.
Okay, so you can go ahead.
All I want to say is we've been there, I've been in this particular house, I grew up in the area, I'm from the area, but in that house, I've been there for about 25 years. You never ever hear anything at all from the business whatsoever, you barely ever see anything. And, and they've been great. So if you have any questions or concerns or anything you want to ask me, please by all means do so.
I think you answered our questions pretty loud and clear, so thank you for coming up.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we'll close, a motion to close the public?
Motion to close.
Second. On favor?
Aye.
Okay, second time up.
Yeah, that concludes our presentation. We've agreed to address all the technical comments. We agreed to work with the board professionals to supplement the buffering. This is a perfect location for the uses we just discussed tonight. If any of you have driven there, it's, you would never know that use existed. And we request that the board grant the relief as with the conditions we've stipulated.
Okay, so on the, what we need to do then Andy is have it where in, we would allow this as long as it was satisfactory to Shari's and Jen's.
Correct, and Jennifer, yes. On the buffering to the residential.
Okay. Okay, thanks, Sal.
Thank you.
And Mr. Chair, I just want to add to the record. So keep in mind, like, a lot of this gravel that was out of there has been there since the mid 2000s without any storm management. Now they're proposing that, it's going to, if there was any issues, we would have heard it and it's going to certainly improve it. The aerial that I've been showing is from NERMAP. It's like, I think it's May of 2023. I'll just give a printout to Eileen. I know they have an exhibit they've been sharing, just since I've been sharing on the screen. I'll give it to her for the board's record. And then I had a comment in my letter about whether they need to come back with a formal site plan. I think the changes that the applicant has agreed to are like minor in nature where the, the use variance plan can be revised accordingly and they don't have to come back to the board, you know, at a later point in time. Just want to get that on the record.
Okay.
Yeah, just, just for the record also, I, at the suggestion of the board professionals at one of the TRCs, they suggested that I add to the meeting notice, site plan approval if necessary, so we didn't have to come back in case the board addressed it at one time. So we covered that in the notice.
Yeah. Okay, it's the pleasure of the board.
Well, Mr. Chair, all the things we've talked about, just to reiterate, you know, the sidewalks, again, we agree, we don't think that's necessary there on the dead end. Close off the driveways if those two houses sell towards the back. The relocation of the dumpster to Jennifer's satisfaction with, and all that. And the buffering issues and also the wonderful policy that they have of parking the trucks inside, which I agree with. With all that said, I would like to make a motion to approve.
Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
Mr. Marilla?
Yes.
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. Rosebell?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
And Mr. Vubel?
Yes.
Application is approved.
Thank you again.
Two for two tonight, Sal, good for you. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it, really do.
Our pleasure.
Good work on it, you guys, thank you. Thanks, Charles. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Good luck, thank you.
Is there any further business from anybody, Eileen?
No further business.